Well, hello. Hi, everybody. My name is Elliot Berman. I'm the Senior Student Board Representative of the Hopkins Public School Board. To kind of get our session started today, this is going to be an interactive section. So we're going to be using a platform that students at Hopkins use in schools. It's called PairDeck. What I'm going to ask you to do is on a separate device or in a different tab, search joinpd.com. It's right here on my share screen. And then you're going to type in this, these six letters to join our presentation and make it interactive. So we got our first student. That's what they use, but first person in our chat. And I'll wait here for about two, three minutes there. We got two people. Yeah, so just joinpd.com and our password is O M S I H N. And while people come in, I will hand it over to Director Andressa.
Thanks Elliot and welcome to everyone. We're just going to take a moment to introduce ourselves. We're presenting centering student voice in school board work. And I am the Vice Chair for the Hopkins Public School Board. Have been serving in that capacity on the school board since January. And I will turn it over to Katie Peterson.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for being here. I'm Katie Peterson, also a director on Hopkins School Board as well as the Director that works most closely with our student board representatives. Linda, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Yukundi. I'm a senior at Hopkins High School and I am a student board representative.
And I'll introduce myself one more time. I'm Elliot Berman. I'm also Senior Student Board Representative. And with everybody joining our chat or still joining, join as we go, we will get started. So the first thing the first thing that we're starting is, is we're going to ask you what your role in your district is. And part of our interaction is if you go to the screen that you logged in and joined our conversation with, it allows you to actually type responses. So go to the screen that you you joined our presentation with and tell us what you, what you do for your district. And then shortly we will present on my screen those responses. Awesome. So if you come back to the shared screen, we can see that we have some elementary teacher here, superintendent, board chair, parent, community member, school board members. We have some program developers. And just a large community of people around. So thank you all for being here. We very appreciate it. Some parents and advocates, previous board chair members, educational consultants, school board members. So thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it and we're excited to get things rolling with you. And I will pass it on to our next presenter.
Thanks Elliot. So just to give you a little bit of context about Hopkins Public Schools, we wanted to share with you, we are a school district that actually serves seven municipalities. So it's much larger than the city of Hopkins, which is one of the cities within our district. It is an increasingly diverse student population that we serve. We have 6,700 students. Forty-seven percent identify as students of color and forty percent have completed and submitted free reduced lunch forms. As we all know, there are issues with that this year. So that demographic is is a moving target. We also have twenty twelve different home languages represented in our district. We do two immersion language programs in our district. And our school board is made up of seven members that are elected through general elections. And recently, the Hopkins Public Schools had a change in leadership. We got a new superintendent, Dr. Mary Perry Reed. And it was through a lot of her direction that we launched some pretty significant changes in the district. One of the things that this presentation is about is about centering student voice. So I want all of you to know that we are intentionally allowing our students at our virtual table to join in on any of these slides to add information that they feel that we have missed, that they would like to add to the discussion. So since we can't really absorb nonverbal cues, I will just ask them to unmute themselves and jump in when they feel the need. So Dr. Mary Perry Reed launched Vision 2031 in Hopkins in 2017. And it was launched with the core belief that every student deserves a brilliant future. And it is the result of multiple avenues of feedback designed to find out what our community, staff and students think a world-class education should look like and what traits each student in the graduating class of 2031 should have. The process was to affirm our community values and that those are important components to the visioning process. And we went through a long process that was led by the Royal Rep Program that was students actually collecting community feedback about what their values and the vision, strategic vision should be. The outcome of that work was a strategic vision that we call Vision 2031. And there will be showing a video that will give you the outcomes of that work.
This is me, a 2031 graduate of Hopkins Public Schools. I'm a confident, empathetic, well-traveled, critical thinker. I see things on a global holistic scale. And I have my own voice. But before I was here, I was here and I definitely wasn't wearing that yet. It was 2018. I was just starting kindergarten in the Hopkins Public School District. Our leader, Dr. Mary Perry Reed, had a goal to bring our school district from great to world-class. She knew in order to do so, we needed to disrupt the current state of our education system and we needed a vision. We opened up to our community and created new partnerships and teams, all with the goal of reimagining what school could and should be. With the help of our team members, our new vision was born, Vision 2031. With this new vision, we were able to see what our district would look like in the year 2031. Education starting from age zero and continuing through age 21 and beyond. Evolve roles of educators, enhancing the quality of students' education and understanding. Students successfully connected to professionals and the job market. Achievements of scholars of color far exceeding society's expectations. Holistic intertwined curriculum. Self-directed and open learning led by students of the world, erasing income and racial predictability from their outcomes. In the year 2031, our district is the number one choice for parents and teachers. We outperform students from around the nation and the world. And I'm the number one choice for higher education and employers.
And it all started here.
So one of the things that came out of the Vision 2031 task force work was that we have a core value of vigilant equity and authentic inclusion. And when I served on that task force and one thing that we brought out of that conversation was that this core value informs and is informed by all our other core values in the district. And so on our school board work, the, the reason why we are centering student voice goes back to that as well. And in June of 2020, we passed an anti-racist resolution, which charges the school board with revamping all of our policies and practices to dismantle structural racism and to be held accountable for doing this work. And part of centering student voice in our work at the school board table is also Vision 2031. It is driving change at a district level. And so we need to be doing the work in centering student voice at all times. It's an intercalal part of how Vision 2031 operates. And the board seeks to operationalize the strategic vision in our work. And one of the ways that, one of the pieces that we've been working on is we use an equity lens. When, in particular, when we're going through our policy work. And we ask ourselves and have staff ask themselves when we're looking at a policy at the board table, how does it impact our core mission and values? Who benefits? Whose voices are needed and what needs to change? And how will the policy be monitored? And we found as we were answering those questions about policies, we kept coming back to whose voice needs to be heard and it was our students. And we weren't hearing from our students in an authentically inclusive way. And so we knew that something needed to change in the board work that we were doing. And the other piece of why we needed to center student voice and school board work was the opportunity gap persistence. While Hopkins does better in this area than the state average, we still see gaps in our graduation rates and test scores along racial lines. And despite historic efforts to reduce these gaps, they continue to persist. And so we strive to eradicate predictable outcomes from our district's achievements. Results, therefore, our work begins with rejecting structures and practices that inherently thwart, exclude and privilege. This work is not impossible and it is our charge as leaders in the school district. We see student voice as the asset that will help us resolve this persistent issue.
Yes. And oh, sorry. Sorry. I was just going to say in addition to all that Shannon mentioned, in order to move towards centering student voice, you have to understand the strength of student voice. And I, as a student, can speak for many others when I say that. In situations where there are a lot of decisions being made for you, you would want representation in that room where the decisions are being made. And I think with this system, that kind of is the focus of how can we get more students in the rooms where decisions for them are being made? And what can they implement and what can they provide? What kind of outlook, what kind of experiences can they speak to? That would help a decision moving forward be successful for students in grades younger and especially thinking about Vision 2031. A lot of the students, I have younger siblings and I've seen some changes just from the small things that have happened in the past few years when this all began, that I think will definitely help this goal of centering student voice move forward in a great way, honestly.
I'll just fill in one final piece Elliot, before you go forward on the slide. And that would be really our school board goals. One of our major goals, as Shannon mentioned, was policy reform and creation that was done in an innovative and inclusive manner. We've brought our students into those discussions pretty greatly. But another one, one of our other board goals for this year, which I'm sure many boards have come up against, is making bold investments due to COVID and budget constraints. So budget constraints due to COVID as well as just the general budget issues that we're having across the board. And when we're talking about making bold investments and restructuring moves, that wholly impacts our student body. And so bringing forth our students and their voice during those types of discussions was really important to us as well. I think Elliot, you can probably move to the next slide. And Linda, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah. So thinking about your communities and districts, what barriers would you say exist in your district or school to center that come in the way of centering student voice?
And just as a reminder, this is a part of the interactive piece. So if you joined our PairDeck, please go, go tell us, go write it out. We'll give you a couple more minutes to think what might be barring you from having students at places that interact change.
And as you guys are thinking through some of those barriers, I actually was thinking about answering the question myself. And I really think when I look back on, you know, prior years and Elliot, maybe you can speak to this as well. But I think some of the problems with bringing student voice more center is that our student voice was really limited in diversity and been frankly, kind of limited in, in just the types of personalities that we had at the table. Elliot, what, what other barriers do you think existed for us in Hopkins? Just to help kind of feed their ideas.
Previously in Hopkins, it was, we'll, we'll get into this later, but there it was kind of a tunnel vision when thinking of student voice. There was a set group of people that were always chosen and that were kind of along the lines of previous representation, either in student council or more leadership roles in our district rather than the entirety of it as a whole. And with that, we'll, we'll take a glance at what you all said for your respective districts. So things like limited group, willing to take risks, to share their voice, not asking, not being there for the students, not asking them to come to the table. Coordinating school board decision, timeframes and settings with student availability for participation. That was definitely a big thing for, that we'll get into later for our revitalization of our program. Huge district. It is overwhelming sometimes with the feedback you get. Students questioning if their voice will be heard and will result in action by the district. Agreed. That's totally a thing that we see right now, seeing how are we going to hold each other accountable to, to the work we're putting in. Administrative reluctance to open up opportunities to board student groups. Completely adhered around the West Metro, hearing from all students, multiple pathways to engagement. Something that we had to work on this past year. No real ask or opportunity to engage. Sometimes you just need to give them a little push to get there, but agreed. Adults are not wanting to share the decision-making role or not thinking students have the ability to understand the difficult decisions which need to be made. Definitely something that you have to work through, especially when, when we're so stuck in the past of that just decision being make it up top and going to the bottom. Identifying students representatives of all student voices and perspectives. I see preconceptions about student roles as barrier in setting, supporting students and thinking beyond the usual ways of thinking. And finally, providing information to students to support informed feedback. Yes, this is a big one. I will completely agree, this is a big one. When, when you get those packets and having to read all through it before you, you show up and are informed, it's tough.
That's fun Elliot. It's because really didn't we see all of those, like every one of those? I was like nodding. That was, those were totally all the barriers that we had too. So this is great. It seems like we'll have some good ideas for them.
Right. So thank you for sharing with your responses and we'll, we'll head into the origins of our program and their challenges. So I joined the program back in fall of 2019 when we were in this awkward transition period trying to figure out. We were in the old program, but we were looking towards a new. The old program was one student per grade, a senior, a junior, a sophomore. At the time, we did not have a sophomore. Traditionally pulled from student council. So that's what we were saying, it was kind of pipelined. You, in Hopkins High School, how it worked is as a sophomore, you had the option to run for student council and only seven people were elected at that point. You would run for the entire class. It's a big, it's a week-long campaigning. I did it, Linda did it. It was a tough thing. Attend it. So in the old program, they attended all board meetings, big time commitment. I found that out being involved in so many things every other week. Five to eight hours on a Tuesday every other week. And finally, the last requirement was no committee present or not requirement, but challenges, no committee presence required, limited presence. So that is things like our Legislative Action Coalition. Not many students part of our school board program are part of that. Or I'm trying to think of other committees we have. We have the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, what I'm a part of. It was hard to be in all those things and continue to do school. So those students had some limited experience and views, right? It was one pipeline coming from student council, kind of the same cookie cutter person, not representative of all student body. Our student body is forty-seven percent non-white. Before, before this new program, my predecessor and predecessor before them, we were all white men. It was a large time commitment, hindered other activities. I'm a part of the swim team. I'm a part of several clubs. I'm a part of lots of stuff. You definitely had to pick and choose what you were going to do and really wanted to be making the biggest impact possible. So it was definitely hard committing to everything and limited input and voice, decision-making and direction. Again, most of us had the same opinions about everything, had the same background with everything, couldn't offer the complete full scope perspective of Hopkins schools as we would have liked. So the transition into the new program started in early spring of 2020. Where we started with rethink and reimagine current program and propose a new board rep program to school board for proof or input. At the time, our, the school board student rep program advisor was our now Chair, Jen Bouchard. And she kind of came into the Hopkins High School and sat down with my predecessor, Joan Ramlet, and pulled in a couple of students and said, hey, what can we do to update our program? It's been, it's been around for quite a while and it, it needs a little booster to switch it up. So spring 2020, we drive awareness for the program to potential reps by sending out school emails. We build out and distribute application forms again, using those emails, undoing some tabling before the pandemic hit and develop interview in format applicant, applicant evaluation. We did that with a combination of students, student board reps that were currently there as well as what board members wanted to see out of incoming reps. Summer of 2020, we did interviews and selection and fall 2020, we welcomed our new student board reps and got them with the program. I'm going to pass it off to Linda. She was one of the new board reps and she's going to talk about her experience with our, our reach out and onboarding.
Yeah. So as Elliot mentioned, I got an email with this open opportunity. And I've always kind of seeked out leadership opportunities. And especially, like I said earlier, I saw the importance of being in a room where decisions were made for me as a student and for my peers as well. So I think the school, school board in my eyes was kind of the highest level that you could get to. You were in the room where a lot of really big decisions were being made. And I saw that to be an attractive quality of being a student board representative. And also I knew that whatever I proposed or implemented in the conversation would be thought throughout, you know, and the board members would take it pretty seriously, which would lead to impactful change. And by hearing what the conversations that were going on at school with my peers, I could help kind of move forward in a way that would be most beneficial to the students. Experienced small government. This is a great way to learn what goes on in a very formal decision-making process. And I got a little bit of a taste of just again, the formalities that go on in a situation like this. And I think someone who has been interested in like government or anything of the sort, this would be a great entry-level experience for a student of the sort. And this also gives great volunteer hours. I know especially as high school students, that's something that we seek. And it's better when you can find something that you're interested in, that you know you can, you know, implement change and also get that piece of, you know, adding up your total volunteer hours. Something that I know a lot of councils try to do at high schools is give students opportunities to be involved in whether it's clubs or organizations. And this is a great way as well to get more students into the program, having their counselors reach out based on how the, the knowledge of the student, thinking whether they'd be a great asset to this program as well as reaching out to leadership groups, whether it be clubs or organizations. At Hopkins High School, we have a great list of clubs that are super involved and kind of looking at which students are involved. How can they help in a situation like the school board? And encouraging them to join and have their voice heard with their experiences as well. So those are kind of some things that we looked forward to. What was, were used in the spring and summer to find students and also kind of help them evaluate whether they'd be interested in something like the school board representative program.
And just to add this to the experience in small government, you really do get a full encompassing experience. Linda and I were actually a part of a, a group that went to the Capitol to testify on bills on behalf of the AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. So you really do get a full encompassing experience in small government. It doesn't just state at school district. So that is something that I'm definitely grateful for. So we will now ask, what will drive centering of student voice in yours district? So will come, do you think it'll come for students? Do you think it'll come for you as a leader or you as a parent? How do you think you plan to go about it as of right now? I know a big thing for us is that we always have leaders that are seeking student voice. Our principal, Crystal Ballard, new to high school this year. When she does interviews for new teachers or new district staff that will work under her, she always asks for students to be present in interview processes. She has some group chats through email chains and stuff and always is like, hey, is anybody available to join this interview that we have going on? So I know I'm deeply grateful for her continued, continued abilities to include student voice. And we'll, we'll click on these responses and see what you guys all plan to do. I can see leaders wanting to add this and students asking for it. Fits with our start plan. So hoping it comes from high school students, high school leadership and the school board, right? Everybody needs to put a little bit in and we will get there together. Reconnect with students, especially from fall of 2021 to ensure resources and programs address impacts of COVID learning year. Trying to see some leadership change, students demanding it, right? Students demanding it's becoming a bigger one every, everywhere we see. Especially around us at Hopkins Schools. I have friends at Minnetoka Public Schools that are trying to implement programs at their school board level. And we, we definitely encourage our fellow student bodies to, to fight to have those seats because they're important to us. It will need to start with school board members and the equity coordinator who are seeking more authentic ways to create student-centered learning. Of course, yeah, as, as students, we can only push so hard. And those, we need, we need some help to get there in a professional setting. Interview and selection. So interview and selection happened. We had extensive applications. We sent out a Google form. I don't know if everybody is familiar with what a Google form is, but it is essentially a survey online. We, we had different prompts, different questions and people really took it and were thoughtful with it and gave us everything they wanted. Director Peterson, do you want to add anything to what you saw on those?
Sure. Sure. Yeah. I think, you know, kind of the important part with the application that we did was really the types of questions that we asked. They were, they were more thought-provoking questions, things about what would you change about our district? We asked them things like what excites you about the future of education? We also asked them what their other interests and We also asked them what their other interests and activities were, asking these sort of more deep dive questions during the application process. Really gave us the ability to know quite a bit more about the background of the students. Before the actual interview process. The interview process itself, we did both in person and virtual interviews. I would say it was probably about two thirds virtual. But we did it as a panel, so myself, Elliot and then our board chair. We, at least two of us were present on all of the interviews. And we really asked them both tactical as well as kind of more deep dive questions during the interview process themselves. We talked a lot and asked a lot about their, the time commitment, talked about what that would entail. Tried to get a really good idea for their interest in the types of committees. As well as like the comfort level that they had in presenting. Or really driving conversations with their fellow students. We had our interview, interviewees talk a lot about their advocacy experience. We felt really strongly that the candidates needed to have at least some background in advocacy and it didn't have to be typical. It could be as easy as, you know, going to my parents and making sure that they weren't, you know, always. Gangging up on me for being the big kid or, you know, I mean, we didn't really care what that advocacy looked like, but we just wanted people who really wanted to stand up. And fight for the things that they believed in. While we were talking about, you know, and selecting as a panel, this was also done as a panel, the selection. We really pushed for diversity of voice and so. We wanted to make sure that we had diverse, gender diverse, neuro diverse, racially diverse, socio economically diverse. Candidates across them, so. You know, we talked a lot about what does this particular person bring to the table that's unique? And we really wanted students who were articulate and confident and engaging. And the reason for that one really is that we knew we were gonna have to get buy in not only from our community, but also from our school boards. School board, you know. Members to make sure that these students could really. Drive confidence. The community buy in was a big one, you know, if these are well spoken and articulate and confident kids. We're gonna move a lot quicker towards this strength of student voice in our district. I think. I think on the next slide, we talk a little bit about the other work Elliot, but. Oh, so the actual structure we selected and Elliot, if you want to. Jump in on this one after maybe I'll just continue chatting for one second here. What we did is we came up with a kind of a three tiered program. At the top tier, we built out what would be our board rep program coordinator, which would be a multi-year term. That's Elliot this year, and so this person during their senior year would really coordinate the program as a whole. The senior board representatives, so two other students from grade twelve would report into the board rep coordinator. As well as a cohort coordinator from each grade. So in Hopkins, our high school is only ten, eleven, twelve. In your particular schools, you may have a twelve person board rep program because you have four grades. But this grade ten cohort coordinator and grade eleven cohort coordinator, they serve multi-year terms. And are generally being pushed through the program in order to be the board rep program coordinator in their last year. The individual grade rep, grade representatives serve single terms. In some cases, they're more, well, in all cases, they're welcome to reapply for a second term. But we didn't want to require all students to give us a three to four year commitment, which is why we came up with this sort of three tiered structure. Elliot, do you have anything to add to the structure that we created?
Yeah, there are multiple reasons for this new structure. Consisted of, again, getting that wider variety of voice as well as taking some of the stress off the individual student. I know personally for me, back in the old program, attending those five plus hour meetings every Tuesday night. Would, would be a lot every other week and then doing additional advocacy work on top of that. For, for the same program was, was concerning to the way it affected sport life, school life. So it's kind of being able to have that cohort of three that you're able to communicate with, really lessen the stress. On, on one person and included for more, more diversity in voice. In thought and in practice, so. That is kind of why we approached that. We also approached a three tier dynamic to make sure that everybody. Could check each one another, right? We, we really did talk about having a, a two person dynamic in a grade, but. In that way, it kind of felt like there was a power imbalance of, oh, there's a cohort coordinator and a rep. And that cohort coordinator was always gonna be above that rep. And with these tripods, it allows, allows everybody to check one another, make sure that no one gets out of line. Or, or not in a way that, that makes, put someone down. So that's what we really were concerned with. So this allows for a solid group of friends to get together, build relationships. And be there for one another. So now, this slide is a little bit different. This is a drag interactive slide. So you'll have a little marker. In the corner, I think it's yellow and it is the quotation marks, but it asks in your district, how often do you see students in places where decisions are being made? And you can take that little yellow quotation and put it over always, often, sometimes, rarely or never. Right now, we're Hopkins as as mostly between always and often. There are definitely places that we are still trying to get in and just figuring out the logistics of it. One of, one of the biggest ones for me is the monitoring and policy committee. We've, we've talked about getting into that. Right now, we have subcommittees that are filled with students for that, but actually getting there. Is hard, just logistics and safety wise, so we understand that it takes time to figure it all out. But definitely a future goal for us, students.
There's a question.
Yeah, I was gonna read it. Go ahead Linda if you want to.
No, I was gonna direct it to you.
So, one of the attendees asked a really good question that, that maybe while people are filling this out. You can answer, it says any recommendations for districts with multiple high schools and incorporating voices from multiple buildings. In the model that was created. I mean, I immediately think of, you can take the cohort and make it not a grade cohort, but a site cohort. But any other thoughts that anyone has around that? That's a good question.
I, I totally agree, making it probably a grade slash school cohort. Making sure, and I mean, you can break it down into each school as well. Our, our program is out of one school, but, and in a small, it's been online, but a future for my program is to. Make it into more of an in-person meeting, so you can do that with. I, I'd assume you can do that with multiple schools, the school district I'm thinking of. That has multiple high schools exist in southeast metro. They have, I think, three high schools. I forgot the name of the district, but I think it includes Roseville School or not Roseville. I might butcher this, but yeah, essentially include multiple students from multiple grades from multiple schools. So instead of having. Three from one school, have one main out of one of those schools and pull from others. You, you, there's ways to include it. I'd be happy to talk it out with you later. And I'm always happy to advocate for other schools and implementing student voice, but. There, there's definitely ways to do it and make sure that everybody is heard and connected to the program. But here we're seeing more on the rarely never or sometime side. So that, that is something definitely to be worked on, that you guys are all champions and for coming up and. I can see everybody here going back to their school districts and bringing some new ideas. Additional opportunities for student voice. We have so many different opportunities. I'm gonna get, pass it on to Vice Chair Andreessen as she leads multiple committees.
Actually, I think Linda, you were gonna talk a little bit about this. And if, if you want me to add anything about the equity inclusion student advisory, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, um, that would be nice. I was just gonna go into a little bit of the committee involvement as mentioned before. There's a few committees that students are allowed to participate in. Some of them being the Legislative Action Coalition, Cities and Board Steering Committee. Educational Services Advisory Committee, so on and so forth. These committee, committees help. Like, well, seeing as they work in different things, I think. For students, it would be really nice to have students in committees like this and so they get to learn a little bit about. Here's listed budgeting, legislation, curriculum, et cetera. They get to hear a little bit about what is. In place currently in the, in their district and also what is subject to change and then in that they can give. Opinion and suggestions, seeing as this change is gonna affect them more directly. There's also committees that are centered in policy work and advising. Same idea, they would get to not only hear what's going on in their schools currently, but also. Work for change and then in terms of student groups and club engagement. Especially in high school, there's a lot of different clubs that kind of cater to different things. So some clubs may be more for communication and community building. Some might be more for that policy and advocacy and so. Peeking into those different clubs and organizations and seeing how the students are leading on their own and seeing what you can take from them. And implement it, whether it is in a committee or this in the school board or whatever it may be. Also special project work, I know Hopkins did some work with the SRO and I know Elliot, you can speak to that a little bit more. So kind of see picking out student leaders that feel passionately about certain special projects, whether it is. Unique to that year or something that's been kind of talked about throughout different years that. Schools would want to work on and I know. A director and recent, you would wanna talk a little bit about that equity and inclusion. And I guess Elliot, you can talk a little bit about the SRO work that you did this past year.
Yeah, part of the really great benefit of revamping our student board rep program was the. Huge amount of applications and response we got. So one of the decisions was to create an equity and inclusion student advisory and we worked on. That all year long with different students and this expanded. The pool of students because we opened it up through seventh through twelfth grade. So younger students can serve on that committee and they. Give us recommendations and, and since I am Chair of the Policy Committee, we. There was a direct feed from that advisory into the policy and monitoring committee of the school board. But the group presented their recommendations to the school board and I think that a lot of those recommendations are actually. Informing our board work and our goal for the upcoming year.
And I will touch a little bit more on special project work, specifically the resource officer effort. Some of you might know, some of you might not know, this past year Hopkins Public Schools decided to end its contract with the Minnetoka Police Department. Therefore, no longer having a school resource officer in our high school. And I was a part of that effort to. Review the contract and make a proposal to the school board. It was something that. Definitely wasn't what I imagined going into high school doing and. Not either joining the, 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 the school board representative program doing. But there, there was a call from our student body and at that point. It was me doing, at that, that moment in time, it was me doing what I did. Think I would be doing, helping students and advocating for them and being their connection to the school board or to positions of power. So we, me along with some fellow students, fellow advocates. I was in charge of formalizing the process of doing a review of interviewing and asking those. Community members that were impacted by what may or may not happen or impacted right now. So things we did. Were interview the police chief, the mayor, our superintendent, school board members, we sent surveys out to students. Student parents, anybody that had a stake, our, our stake groups. We talked to, we, we got information, we got data and then we made a board proposal. And it was a great effort to be a part of, great experience for me personally in that realm. And just another added benefit of being a board rep. You get to see the politics, the government and the people behind it. So something that I'm very appreciative or. I appreciate from this opportunity. Other things like special board work, currently we are working on rewriting our student handbooks. That is the biggest project to ever come across my table. Which is not something that we think about a lot, but is actually required for our students to be able to guide through our student. Handbooks and know what the content is in there. And it's hard when it is written and produced by the district and not in the perspective of students. So currently we are going through it, we are finding the information we need and the information that will. Be helpful for students, putting that kind of upfront as well as inserting things that will help our student body. Things like links or, or ways to help mental health. To find those sources, these resources and get that support. Other things like dress code, putting that more up front, redefining that, taking out a gender lens for that, making sure it is. Equal to all students across the board, whether they self identify as gender specific or non-binary. And just making it more inclusive, inclusive as holes as a whole. On this year, our building's also undergoing some. Some structural change in bathrooms. And having that new information in our student handbook is important, so students know what is happening and they are up to date. And can, can use facilities as they are comfortable.
I also want to add to that, like discipline policy is another one that would be implemented in the student handbook that I feel like a lot of students aren't aware of. Because most handbooks are very like not user friendly. Other things may be transparency and access equity policies or curriculum. Whether it's like decolonizing or ethnic studies and also learner pathways. So just to that piece, that user. Friendly handbook is something that we are trying to work towards and I think would be really useful and I, I know I. Don't think I've read the student handbook in full and a lot of students don't know where to find it or just even how to navigate it, so. Kind of thinking about what is most important for students to be aware of when they're entering. A school year or whether it's coming, incoming students that are transferring. What are some important information that they might need to know that might go under that, you know, spoon handbook piece that. Also students right now are working on, so that's another really important thing to keep in mind.
Yes, along with that, I think one of a very big thing that I know Linda's been working on for a long time now with some of her other clubs is. We are, are, are new reporting system. For, for students to speak out about any kind of negative engagement they've been having. We've been having a struggle with this in Hopkins High School, having that reporting, making sure it's taken through. To administration, make sure it's being revised and then checking back with students. So I know that's something that. Linda and I have advocated for, for a while now and it's good to see that it's being implemented at that high school level. Cause that is a high school thing that we had to work with administration at our high school for, so. Very pleased to see that new, new administration that came in this year. We're happy to work with us on that. Moving forward.
Great, and I'm conscious of our time, because we do want to have time to answer your questions if, if you have any. One of the things that we are. Working on is. That this is a process, right? And we're learning a lot and as we look toward the future, I think you've heard some. Clues of the things that are in the works, things that we're implementing, but always with the idea of how. We can continue. Um, but always with the idea of how um, we can continue to center student voice. Um, making sure that the school board is being held accountable, but also providing support and the right kinds of support to um, uh, build out, build in and out mechanisms for student voice to be collected, acted upon, and then um, sent out into the community. Um, we touched a little bit on how important community buy-in is. It's essential because often what will happen when you start to do this work is adults want to undermine student voice and to take away student agency. So it is absolutely the work of the school board to um, protect that process and to make sure that we are always going back to our focus being on student voice and the power of that and the strength of it to um, reach our ultimate and the goal, which for us in Hopkins is Vision 2031. So, anything, I forgot, anything you guys wanna add about learnings in particular from the student side, or um, we can just open it up to questions?
Yeah, I think opening it up to questions is most important. We don't have to review the mistakes we made in implementing and anything like that, so. Not that we made any.
None, no. Um, one thing that I think is really exciting and that we started to do a little bit um, this year was that, so this is a heavy lift, right? Like Elliot, you were saying it's a, it's a lot of time, it's a big commitment. Um, we're asking students to do a lot of really difficult work in order to advocate for themselves and their fellow students. And so um, one of the really great and innovative things that happened this year um, at the high school was that students really, um, they were allowed to take class that would give them credit for working on reimagining school safety, which came out of the board decision not to renew the SRO contract. And so that's a, um, what we would like to do hopefully is to expand the credit opportunities for our students so that doing this work on committees and on the school board, they can actually get credit um, to use toward graduation for that. Great to hear. This initiative is going well. Student voice and governance is important and practical as you have demonstrated. What is the continuity between this project and student agency and their learning at multiple levels?
Um, you know, I could speak to that a little bit in one of our, I, I think that really goes back to our restructuring, right? And the student voice at the board table as we start to talk about changes that we are making as a district when it comes to curriculum, you know, school day structure, um, classroom structure, discipline policy. You know, most of this, I think, really starts um, at the board table because we're approving budgets to create new models. We are driving change and innovation from the way that curriculum is developed and delivered to our students. And by having our reps at the table, they can almost check us. Um, and they do check us on, you know, how these types of things at, at the highest level and from a concept perspective are working. Um, and then at the, at the policy or um, at the committee level, they're engaged in, you know, the types of things like curriculum development. Um, and so I think it's really, it's hand um, in glove with just the initial structuring of the board work and then the trickle-down to the administration because their voice is already in the decisions, right? They're already helping us approve these things. And so whether it's the curriculum development, um, you know, I, I do think there's more room though, and Elliot and Linda, you can speak to it. I do think there's more room um, to have student voice at the implementation level.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, well, I feel like once it starts, you start to realize a lot more spaces that students can be helpful and useful. Um, and like, I like the piece that you added on pub, and, and the fact that like, students can check whether the work is actually being done since we are the students and we are experiencing all of these um, changes and decisions like firsthand. So I think that's the best way that you can kind of see it carry through. Um, and the student reps can also help um, advocate and also um, kind of put a spotlight on some things that aren't working or didn't follow through and, you know, so on and so forth.
Do we have any other questions? I don't see any others. Um, I'd like to just, I think that we threw a lot of information at you. So if anyone is a slow processor like I am and likes to think through things before I have questions, um, feel free to contact us, um, Katie or I, well, I'll speak for myself. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions and we'd be happy to talk with you more about this, the process at Hopkins and, and the learnings and takeaways we, we've had and continue to have.
And I think we will pass it back to Alex.
Um, I just have a question. I'm um, I'm curious, um, for, for you and Linda, um, what you're, you know, how do you encourage your peers to get involved? How do you, like, what do you tell them about this process or, or how do you kind of continue to build that next generation? I know both of you are, are seniors, right? So, um, what's, what's coming after you?
Um, as kind of the lead of the program, um, make sure like everything coming after me, it, it was, it's especially hard this year for the onboarding, for everything to be digital. Um, I definitely am more interactive in person and able to connect with someone better in person. Um, so it's, it's more happening now than I, than I wish it would have happened in the fall. Uh, but uh, I, I'm checking in with the, the cohort coordinator below me, um, and the one below them to kind of set them up for uh, what they have to do, the kind of the, the bare minimum I'm telling them right now because it does, for their perspective, it looks like I'm doing a little bit more than they would like to be doing, which I could agree. I, I've kind of spread myself thinner than any other school board rep um, previously has or um, probably will have. So just making sure that they, they know that uh, they are here because they are wanted. They don't feel, they don't need to feel, they don't, shouldn't feel that they have to be um, present because it is expected of them in everything. Um, and it is okay to say no to, to uh, some requests. Uh, there, there are the minimums we have to attend, right? We have to attend our committees that we're assigned to, we have to attend the board meetings that we're assigned to. Um, but the kind of extra stuff, um, you need to be a student first, you need a student, you need to be a kid first. Um, this is not a way for us to pass childhood. It is a way to us to uh, see into adulthood and share our student perspective. Um, and that is definitely a thing that I've had to point out to those coming up.
Oh, oh, sorry. Um, I was gonna say, I have been in a lot of different conversations in the past in terms of like, when a decision has been made um, and administration announces it, there's a lot of buzz around conversation and something I like to tell like my peers is if you want it to be changed or you, you would have liked the decision to be different, here's a way that you can do it. Um, especially this year, like, it's definitely been difficult because a lot of people, whether, you know, it's just like energy levels or whatever it may be, can be really difficult to um, commit yourself to something like this. But I think looking into the future, um, if you know of some decisions that you wish were different, um, based on things that were affecting you, um, this is one of the best ways to do it or um, apply yourself to other um, leadership opportunities that, you know, your voice will be heard and you're just, you know, what you think will be taken seriously and whatnot. So that's something I like to pass along.
Thank you. Well, you guys, I know we are at time. Um, I so appreciate it. I'm sorry. I like, I have 10 more questions to ask you, but um, thank you all so, so much. I wanna respect others' time as, as the folks are hopping off. Um, but thank you for sharing this incredible journey that you guys have been on.
Of course.
Thank you for having us.
Um, I do see one more question in our chat, uh, and they're still here on the call, so I don't know. I have.
I think you're totally fine to go for it as long, and I would just say, anyone else, if you don't wanna be here, you're welcome to move on.
Is this the addressing discipline governance?
Yes.
Question Elliot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that, so a lot of that sort of, so we haven't really had that come up because we've been in COVID, right? But um, as far as how it's been done historically, my understanding is that um, for those issues, we um, go into a, a um, executive committee, correct, Katie? And um, things like that are addressed there and then um, students, board reps are not part of that. So there's definitely spaces in which um, the student voice being centered is an individual student and if that case, it would be discipline issue.
Yeah, i- issues of privacy are handled on, by directory, direct uh, board members who have access to that information. But no, they wouldn't be involved in anything where uh, where we're talking about privacy issues or discipline issues.
Um, and I know this might be a little bit separate from what they were asking, but there was an occasion last year that um, student board reps were brought in. It, it was specifically at a uh, a high school level and it was dealt with high school administration. Um, but student board reps at the time were asked to participate in um, solving it. It was a, it was a student on student um, dilemma uh, that happened between two clubs. Uh, so we, we were asked to get involved and kind of talk it out and how we could work it out with uh, at a district level and at a high school level. So it definitely is um, situational um, and cannot be applied to every situation, so.
Well, thank you guys. I know that this was such an important topic and I know, um, I'm sure we could probably continue talking about this for a long, long time. There's so many details and nuances that you guys have figured out that are so helpful, so. I'm sure other people will be reaching out to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Bye.